...work session, the Board of Commissioners of Paulding County, Georgia to order. And I'd like to ask the Marshal to bring the list forward. Anybody wishing to speak? And if you have a cellphone on, you might silence it at this time. And of course, we have a special guest, Mr. Ben Skipper. Carroll County, Georgia.
I just wanted to say hello.
And at this time, he's going to sing the national anthem. What we do have, though, is a privilege to have the Pastor from Dallas First Baptist Church, Pastor Todd Gannis, to bring us the invocation and lead us in the place to flag. Please stand if you're able.
I'll stay right here. That's fine. Can I read a little bit? Four verses before we...
Yes, sir.
All right. From David, he said, "The eyes of the Lord are toward the righteous, and his ears are open to their cry. The face of the Lord is against evil doers, to cut off the memory of them from the earth." The righteous cry, and the Lord hears and delivers them all out of their troubles. The Lord is near to the broken-hearted and saves those who are crushed in spirit. Before I pre-let's say, I'm honored to be here. Been here almost a year and a half now. I was in Walker County for almost 18 years. So I think it's great. When I came down here, someone, they said, "You're going to Paulding County?" The world is moving to Paulding County. So I think that's happening. We've got to find a way to make it spinnable for them. It's a great place there. And I appreciate it. You all know that's a big job. I can't even imagine. People say, "Boy, preaching would be..." But this would be this and the high school principal jobs. But let's pray. Father, we thank you for the day. You're mighty and awesome, God. This is the day you may rejoice and be glad. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God. I want to thank you for a county that allows the pastor to come to pray prior to the meeting. And when I pray for Paulding County, I know that it's growing. People are moving in. And with that comes great responsibility. So help all of these leaders as they make decisions. Pray this county will prosper physically and spiritually. I pray there'll be unity in the county. Just pray people, especially with safety in our schools and the people on the roads. Thank you for all of our first responders that are out there. You're a wonderful child. All the force. I pray for these dear folks. I know they have, they're right in the middle of a lot of things and have tough decisions to make. I pray like David, Lord, they would inquire of the Lord. We read so often, one of the big differences between David and Saul was David before making decisions, inquired of the Lord. So that's what we're doing today. Just commit this meeting to you. Pray great progress is made. Pray Christ may... Amen.
You have the plates to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Gannis. We appreciate you. The September 13th, 2018, and the board session minutes and the September 13th, 2018 board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements, our positively Paulding segment today, which is one of my favorites, is on a new event that just occurred this past Saturday. So enjoy the highlights.
Good morning, and welcome to the first annual Paulding Riders for Wishes Bicycle Ride. This is a benefit for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and we appreciate everyone coming. We've got a great turnout. I think we've got around 70 riders, maybe a few more. And so far, and I'm sure we'll have a better total here in a minute, we've raised over $15,000 for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So that's a great job. I ride on Silver Comet Trail probably every, pretty much every day, at least five days a week. So I love the trail, love the cause, love Paulding County. So happy to be here.
And I want to say thank you to Mr. Frank Baker, who put this together. He is so great for our county and charitable events. And he deserves to be here. This is our first annual, so we'll record many more.
We're, it says, Super Daddy. Broken all our expectations. Our expectations were about 50 riders this year, the first year, and about $15,000. And so we've shattered both of those. Feel really good about it. Beautiful day. So once we take a look at all of the things that we've done and we look at our after-action, we're already planning on next year, so we're excited about that. It was great to have the community come out for this and to share in the event, but also share with our trail. As Ashley Henson said a few minutes ago, at our closing session, I talked about the importance of that trail. It is a really important asset for state of Paulding County and to find up this great event to help with the Make-A-Wish foundation. So we're very pleased.
The riding was fun, and I'll ask Ron and Tony to chime in if they want to. The highlight to me was the two families that were there that had been the recipients of the foundation, Make-A-Wish Foundation. And both of them had gone to Disney World and just great testimony. And not only did I sweat more than anybody else, I think I cried more than anybody else.
Yeah, it was a good, it was a good day. And I'm just, Frank, well done. And I know I got there to help on Saturday morning, and there were a lot of county employees that were there helping out and some riding and some helping. And I think it's a good way to bring community together and showcase one of our big assets, the trail, and help a really great cause. And so I know the kids right here from Paulding will be enjoying those wishes being granted. And it's a, it was a good day. It was great all around. So I look forward to next year and the year after that.
It was a great event, and I agree with Dave. I believe the highlight was meeting those who are recipients of what Frank has set forth here. They were, they were really the ones that this is all about. We got to enjoy it, they got to enjoy it. Just a good cause. Thanks, Frank.
The board commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Deputy Rachel Howard with the Marshal Bureau and Lieutenant Steve Goss will come forward as he's coming. I'm just going to read the public safety awards. She thought she was coming for Ali, so it's a surprise. This award is presented to Rachel Howard in recognition of outstanding service to her community, presented by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners this 20th day of September.
How nice, how cool was that?
You should always read the agenda.
It is on there too, in bold print. But I owe you for getting me on the last award that I got, so thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. On behalf of the chief press, I would like to extend his apologies for not being here. He is in a state mandated school for new chiefs. I know he's required to do by post. So he has asked me to step up and tell you about one of our deputies. Deputy Howard started her career here at Paulding County Marshal Bureau in March of 2016 and has been here ever since. She works with just about every department in the county when it comes time for the ordinance that has anything to do with alcohol and beverages or server IDs. She has worked hard to improve the Marshal Bureau and make things easier for the citizens of Paulding County. She doesn't get a pat on the back often enough, but when she does, it's well deserved. In the past year alone, she's worked closely with the county attorney on help rewrite the alcohol beverage ordinance and slimline it a little bit, plus helped create the Home Winery ordinance here in the county, which is the first ordinance of that type for the county. I've learned since I've known Deputy Howard that I never really have to ask her what she's doing or even wonder if she's doing something, because she's always doing something to make the Marshal Bureau better. The process to obtain permits and business licenses or alcohol beverage license from us, she's slimlining those. She's working currently on getting those set up to where they're available online for the citizens to do. So there's no doubt in my mind that she comes in every day smiling. And we use a beat in the park a lot because we both come in about 7:30. I hear about her afternoon yesterday, and she hears about my afternoon on the way in. And then we see each other a lot during the day. So it is with great pride and honor that I do introduce Deputy Rachel Howard and thank everyone for being here on her behalf, in particular, her father and her husband. They were asked to come to this important celebration. She did not know anything about this, so that was great. So I'm pleased to say, Rachel, thank you. Thank you for everything you do for us at the Marshal Bureau and everything you do for the commissioners and everything you do for the citizens of Paulding County. Well deserved. Dan and husband, come on. Sir, you're not going anywhere.
I was trying.
Oh, I'm not.
Oh, yeah.
Chief ain't here till I get all the glory. That's right. Thank you again.
You don't ever apologize.
Again, thank you for having me here. She's tapped it for an hour, right? Is that right?
Me too. Tony, I can't see you. There you go. Thank you.
We like to recognize and kind of a spontaneous recognition, Dave, that'll come from Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, I'm sorry about not giving you more notice on this. I saw Joey in the back of the room, and it reminded me. Joey, it was a couple of weeks ago, I was up at Kroger there at 61 and 278, and I was filling up my tank of gas, and I looked over and there was a fire truck sitting over to the side. And there was a very helpless young lady with a flat tire, and two of our fine firefighters had stopped to take a moment to help her get that tire changed. And it was, it was a good thing to do. I was real proud when I saw it. So I don't, I don't have their names here on me. I imagine they were at the station right behind the grocery store there, but I do appreciate it. It was, it was great.
You're all invited guests we have. We'll soon give reports here in a couple of minutes. So number one is discuss action to award smart net maintenance contract to Corus 360 in the amount of $67,349.93 to be presented on this Pollard and Mr. Lyons.
Good morning. I'm going to try to continue that good vibe that we've got going on here. So this is actually a $58,000 reduction from the previous year for this contract. Most of that reduction is because some of the equipment is coming off the maintenance contract, and we have approved the purchase of new equipment in the 2019 budget. So that may make it go up a little bit next year, but for now, this contract's coming there. Any questions?
We had good reading, so I think we're all looking forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Number two, discuss action to approve the purchase of furnishings for the customer service center in the amount of $226,819.90 to Advantage Office Supply, Ms. Pollard and Ms. Ashmore.
This will furnish the customer service center when the water system moves to, to the new building. This was a, this has been a challenge to get through. It's a lot of equip, a lot of furnishings for that facility. And it kind of left me scratching my head a little bit because we had three participants, Advantage Office Creations and Georgia Correctional. And Advantage came in low, and we're recommending an award in the amount of the $226,819.90. But one of the primary reasons that Advantage came in so much lower than Georgia Correctional is where this includes some panel structures. So basically some cubicle structures of which Georgia Correctional doesn't do. So that the cost for those were significantly higher than what Advantage could do it for, and that in turn made the entire contract lower for Advantage than Georgia Correctional. But in the past, we've done bids where Georgia Correctional was significantly lower. So that's the primary reason. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Discuss action to approve the selection of Tetra Tech for the copper mine roof facility in the amount of $169,764. Ms. Pollard and Ms. Ashmore.
We had a request for proposals for qualified firms to expand the copper mine facility, which is quickly reaching capacity. We had six firms participate. The engineers ranked Tetra Tech as the highest-ranked engineer to provide that, the engineering services for this. And this particular contract will provide the preliminary design. We'll be back, as I mentioned, in February for a final design, and hopefully we'll have construction this time next year. So if you have any questions, Ms. Ashmore, or specifics, but it's basically expanding the plant.
Any questions? Thank you, Captain. Now we get into reports, reports from committees and departments. And we'll start out with Mr. Will Lyons, our Information Technology Director, to talk about the breakout of this new website that Will's been working on, and his team's been working on for a long time. I love it.
Okay, good morning. Thank you for having me. I guess I'll start out by reflecting on one of the commercials we've all seen on TV, where the big delivery truck delivers big screen TV, and you're so excited to get it, and he brings it in the house, and you look outside on the advertisement, there's a newer TV coming out. Bigger, more functional, and more functionality. Well, I guess the same thing is, we're used to it in the IT department with code and function of the features of services we deliver as well. Soon as something comes out, you've planned on it for years, it comes out, people are happy with it, and within a few months later, there's a new functionality that you didn't have in your release. So we know that there's going to be things we've missed. We know there's going to be future code releases that have more functionality, but we are excited today to launch our new website that has the functionality and features that we saw available in today's market. Our last release was 2010, so we're almost nine years into the website. So not only has the staff lost out on some of the functionality and features available in new code sets, but our citizens have also lost that ability to view that content. So I know we've got a busy day, so I'm going to jump right in to our website. About six months ago, we put together a committee of six departments who would not only look at our existing website, but also bring to the table some of the things they've heard from the internal departments and citizens about what was needed on our website. So we sat down, we made those decisions, illustrated some points that need to be brought to the table, and it was a good time to bring our new logo to the front of our website at the same time. So we still have the same website, www.paulding.gov. As you can see, it's a totally different look with our logo and a advanced search bar right there on the front. So anything you're looking for in the county, instead of going to the navigation menus, just type it in, hit the search button, and it'll come right up for you. We took advantage of some graphic buttons here down at the bottom. These are pretty much our most popular items on our website. So we always wanted those to be out in front of everybody, always available. And if you'll notice, when our website goes up or down, those graphical buttons stay in place. We also changed the way that our navigational menu operates. If you hover your mouse over the top, over government, you'll see that is broken into sections now. We've got the commission board section, chairman and board member sections. Although they may appear to be the same, depending where you're from and what you're used to hearing, you may overlook it in one section. So the goal of the new website was to make sure we put the information in several different places so that citizens can find it, no matter how they look for it. So when we look at board minute dates we have over here, you'll also find those over in the right-hand side as well. And I'll give you a better example of that in a minute. The county departments list all our county internal departments that we've seen before. If I click on the government button instead of highlighting it, instead of hovering over it, you'll see that same menu comes up. So if you're used to hovering, if you're used to clicking, you're always going to get that information. And that was important to us. I'm going to click on the water system. They've done a great job with editing their page, so I want to kind of give them kudos and highlight their page for a minute. You see, they were able to bring in their own logo, have their own content with which they manage. Whatever changes in their department, they know what's important. They know what the public needs to hear, so they can put that information out there without having to send it to a middleman to adjust it. I'm going to go back real quick as well to the government hover for a second, go down to the sheriff's office. Didn't see Gary in the back. But what they did is they took a different approach. They stayed on our website, but now they have their own navigational menu up at the top. You'll see that the navigation has changed to command, staff, division, public information, and I want to. Also, the graphic buttons have changed. They're most popular. So when you go to the internal departments, like the water department, community development, DOT, our navigation and our graphics will be different than the sheriff's office. Back for a second. As we continue on to the, through the menu up at the top, you'll see where we get into our online services, from our building and development department lakes to our communications, where you can view board meetings, view on-demand meetings, and content that Jeff Harkins, Channel 23 creates and puts online for us. We have our online payments. Oops, I'm going to go ahead and click on that, so I don't do that again. And you'll notice over here on the online payments, we have citation tickets that can be paid. But if you come over, online services, we have pay citations. So again, it's duplicate information, however, depending on how you want to get to it, it's going to get you to the end result, and that was important. We look at this for Paulding. We actually put in a few things that make Paulding what it is and how special it is to us and the community. And hopefully, we could draw in some folks to come see us a little bit. Expect this list to grow, especially as this viewing or this presentation gets out to the public. People will start sending us ideas, and we'll be able to populate this page a little bit more. The one-two page is, I'm pretty excited about. Again, we broke it into sections versus just having one big list. And you can see, if you want to access menus and agendas, you can access them here. If you want to view them, you can see them here. So again, depending on how you're used to coming across that information here and yet, you're going to be able to get to it in multiple fashions. You can apply for different services throughout the county. You can subscribe to newsletters, flashes, and things set forth that we have available. You can pay for some of the permits and applications that we have in the county. You can request information as well, and then you report issues down here in the corner. Again, we broke it up. We want to give more of a human feeling than a computer feeling. So I want to, I want to access this. I want to view this. So that's how that menu was developed. And again, this was six departments that sat down and kind of brought together the information and laid it out. So kudos to those departments, because this was not a vacation of any type. It was an add-on to their daily functions, and they had to continue their operating duties and take on this, and we've been working on for about six months. As we scroll down, we'll go back to the homepage by clicking on the little home button, and we'll scroll down into the news section. So as you can see, the news section is changed from a list-type layout to more of a category-type function. In front of us, we see Paulding County places ninth in digital counties, which is pretty special to us. That was a ninth grade, or ninth grade, that was a ninth-place award for us nationwide for what our old website was. So I expect that to go up with the way the new website is designed. We also have the pipeline of construction and the chairman's corner. If you look briefly to the right and to the left, you'll see the arrows, which indicates there is more information on either side of that. So you can scroll through that as you wish, and then if you want to view more of them, you can view all or click on those, and it will take you to the detailed information. As we continue to scroll down, we get into the state connected area. We know that Facebook is very popular, having almost more subscriptions to it than countries that we know very well. So we have to plug it into Facebook. If you do not have a Facebook account, you can come to our homepage and kind of see what's going on in the Paulding County Facebook. We see our fearless fire chief there giving an interview, you know, letting us know what's going on in the county, and you have some of the other ongoing. So we know that Facebook is an important communication network to the citizens of our county, so we wanted to make sure we incorporated that into the website. We still have our calendars, but we laid it out a little bit different. We have our meetings. I'm going to click on the meetings before I go. It turns shade white. You see, we have our board meeting on the 20th, planning admission on 20th. You can also click, view all, and see all the meeting dates. I'm going to go back to events, and we'll see that those meetings are now removed, and this is only the events that are taking place in the county. So there's a distinction between the two, depending on what you're trying to get to and what you want information on. We continue down to the spotlight section of the website. This spotlight section is basically going to highlight some of the big activities that we have going on in the county. You see the reservoir, you see the detention center here at the Watson complex, and Keep Paulding Beautiful. These are ongoing events, and they'll be on here for a while. We'll continue to add information to them. So if you just go to these links, you'll be able to get updated information any time you request it. As with the news section, when we have more than three items, you'll see the navigational menus on the right and left of the website. Scrolling down a little bit further, we've got our contact information, which is always important. We always want folks to be able to find us. We have our quick links to the other agencies of the county. Board member Tracy Lyons is in the audience, so she'll be happy to have the Paulding County School system link available there. We have our frequently asked questions. If you click on those, that actually takes you to the frequently asked questions of all the departments. Over here, we have a listing of the departments. The department's questions and answers, and if you come to them and you just click on them, it'll change the page and give you that information that you're looking for. So we'll go back to the homepage. There is a sign-in button up here at the top. I encourage citizens and employees to sign up on our website. It allows us to kind of keep involved with citizens. If you're going to receive a news flash or sign up for a service, typically you have to create an account on the website, so that to create an account on the website, so that'd be the first step in signing up to receive those notifications, job announcements, road closures, and just similar things that pop up from now time to time again doing county business. Overall, that's the gist of it. I know we have a busy agenda, so I don't want to take up all the time. County Administrator Frank Baker, do you have anything to add? All right. I know you're a part of this. Any other questions from the Board? Do you think you'd like me to address?
I would just say two things. One, to notify me, I'm glad to see we've talked, and all of us have talked about a way to be able to proactively get information to people. If you looked at the list of things, you can see a whole lot of stuff you get notification on. Also, I don't think you mentioned it, if you did, it's good for our customer, but this is, the site does reformat itself well for a mobile browser, so when you're hitting it from your mobile. The old site was very, I won't say it was bad, I'll say it was not good at doing that. But, the, this is a responsive site that does format well for the mobile browser, so when you're on the go, if you need information, it's easier to find there. Well-formatted for you. So, all done well, and all of those involved looks good.
That's an excellent point. You know, displays and content are coming in all forms and fashion these days, so when we release information, content out to the public, it's important that we look at all the different types available. I appreciate you mentioning that.
We'd all like to take the opportunity to thank you publicly and the different department heads that made input into this. It's fabulous. It's a great step up, and it's going to serve our public and our citizens to a much higher degree. So, just thank you.
I'd like to just go back just a second and just ask Lori, did number three, bid award number three, did it go with Board, the Water Advisory Board yesterday?
Yes, sir. All of the water and sewer items on today's agenda were thoroughly discussed yesterday with the Water and Sewer Advisory Board.
Okay. I knew it was supposed to, and the date was wrong in the backup, and I just wanted to make sure that that did, that happened. Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
And next, in the area of reports, Ms. Eileen Culberson's going to come up and give us an update on the Animal Control Facility.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here this morning to give you a status update on our TNVR program, Trap, Mutant, Vaccinate Release. But first, I wanted to give you some information on an event we recently had, was through the shelter. It was held on the weekend of August the 18th. This is a nationwide event that is dedicated to finding homes for animals in shelters. This year, over 12,000 shelters participated in the, and 101,503, that was this year alone, animals found homes. Since this program began in 2015, over 255,000 animals have been adopted. We adopted over 100 cats and dogs ourselves, and almost, almost cleared our shelter. We actually had people that got upset because they came in to adopt a cat, and we didn't have any. They left mad. This event comes at a good time of the year because most shelters are full. Unfortunately, right now, we're almost back at capacity. In May of this year, this Board, thank you, voted to test a pilot program called TNVR, Trap, Mutant, Vaccinate Release, the feral cats. I have to be honest with you. In the past, I was of the mindset that there was no way, no way this program was going to work. There was the concern for citizen pushback. I thought, like a lot of people, that we would continue to euthanize our way out of this problem. I didn't, I didn't push hard enough for this to make this change happen. One day, I had a conversation with Carrie and Caitlin from Best Friends Animal Society. They questioned and asked me and said, "Have you seen a difference in the population of cats in the area you're euthanizing from?" Standing back and thinking, I'm looking, no, we haven't seen a difference. There's still just as many. After all the time to trap, care for, and eventually prepare yourself to have to euthanize these cats, we were no closer to a solution. Stats don't lie. If other counties can do it, why can't we? Today, I am pushing to keep this program going. As of today, we have TNVR approximately 80 cats, that since June of this year. The city of Dallas has a large cat problem also. We are helping Chief Hester try to stop the population growth of these cats. I've also reached out to the city of Hyrum and offered our cooperation with them also. We are continuing to raise money through donations and have applied for several grants to keep this program going.
Very good. Go ahead.
Thanks so much, Eileen.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. It's a great program.
It is. So many people thought, really just thought we were crazy, is what it was. Because when you first hear about it, just scratch your head. But, very good. Appreciate your work. Keep it up.
Thank you. I know you've left the podium, but it occurs to me, how many volunteers are helping you out?
It's just me and my staff.
Okay.
Me and my staff right now.
All right. I would think there are a lot, a lot of folks that would like to get involved as successful as it is.
Come on.
All right. We're very pleased and privileged today to have Mr. Eric Johnson of CPS Comprehensive Program Services to give us an update on our fantastic jails. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I can build big projects, but I can't run PowerPoint. I'm pretty pathetic. There we go. Good morning, Chairman, fellow Commissioners. I'm Eric Johnson, Comprehensive Program Services. Here to give you a quick update on the jail project. So, typically, these range from cost and schedule, so we'll get right into it. Cost-wise, you can see on the initial budget and the projected budget, the bottom line number is still $70 million, $200,000. There's been a couple of things that we've reported previously that we can mention. The GMP is still $60 million, $100,000. The intercontingency now is $950,000. That money, we took $550,000 and moved it down into the city sewer tap fee number of $850,000. All the other numbers should be pretty much the same. Well, actually, they are the same. So, and the rest of them look pretty good thus far. So, at the bottom of the page, we will also continue to bring you up to speed and update you on where the construction contingency is. And as I've mentioned previously, that's a number that is carried within the CMA RISs construction contract, term of construction, for issues relating to buying out the job and things that weren't necessarily caught in their original layout of the project. So, we watched that. As you can see, it is going in the right direction. We're able to buy it out and savings from those packages. And we'll, we've got a little update on the packages a little bit later, too. But, as you can see, that number is going up, and we track it, we track the pluses and the minuses. So, whenever they do want to use that construction contingency, although it's in their contract, they're allowed to use it, we also grade how they are using those funds, too. So, as far as a couple of issues that are going to impact the overall budget, and one is the conformance documents, which we have discussed before. The Turner Construction provided a guaranteed maximum price. I think the drawings were 60, 70% complete. They had all the assumptions and clarifications we reviewed. What this issue is, when the architect completes the drawings, 100% contract documents, we call them the conformance set, Turner goes and prices all those and comes back and either has a plus, minus, or a zero-dollar change order that we move into their contract, which basically provides for the 100% documents to be part of their, their contract. Right now, it's 60 or 70% construction documents that are in their contract. This, when we come with the change order, which will be in October 9th meeting, that will incorporate the 100% documents into their contract. So, we can take questions in a minute. I don't want, we'll skim over that, if you have any other questions on that. We get through this. So, one thing that we, we were dealing with out there was the city of Dallas. We had a bunch of meetings with them, and it occurred to us that we are in a architectural district, and as good neighbors, eventually, the trees are there now. We brought, redone the site programming to where we're able to keep a lot of the trees on the backside, working with Scott Green and Bruce Coyle in the city of Dallas. But, eventually, one day, those trees will probably come down. And when they do, it would, if you've ever driven down the highway, it was a big precast wall. So, this is in line, and the city of Dallas worked with us pretty well. And that's a result of what those meetings encompassed to basically pretty up that side of the building. And that is going to be, through Metromont contracts, already been bought out, and shop drawings, the footings have all been handled to accept this change. And that is the actual number. And that will be part of the change order that we bring you on October 9th. So, as you can see right there. So, rock. I want to say, we did do a lot of investigation out there. Nobody's perfect. We have plotted where the soul whorings are. We've been meeting with Scott and Bruce about that as well. We'll get back to how we feel we want to deal with that as far as all the work that we did to try to avoid this. But even if we had done all that work, we'd have to deal with it anyway. So, I know there's questions about all the reconnaissance, if you want to say that word, trying to find the rock. Well, we found it. That's really the only way you can find it, is to dig it up. We doubled it at the training center. We're dealing with it very similarly, in that we brought out a piece of equipment, and sometimes it's ripable rock. A lot of the trench rock we're doing out there with utilities, we're able to actually get through it, which is significantly less expensive. But, as you can see here, we brought out a Roham, got about two feet off of it, and then you just hit that granite that you, you can't deal with except to blast it. So, the drill rig was supposed to be out there today. The drill rig, folks, I just got a text. Their insurance went up considerably, so hopefully it'll be out here tomorrow. Maybe, they're working on it right now, Turner is, to try to realize why their insurance went up. So, just to give you an up-to-date, up-to-date scenario on, we were expecting that drill rig to come out today. Kind of still may, but some costs went up. So, anyways, you can see, when we threw, went through all of that, we're estimating around 11,000 cubic yards that we're going to get rid of. We're working with the county on how to, where to put this rock, and how we're going to get more dirt in here as well. So, everybody, it's a collective effort on how to deal with this the most expeditious and costly way to deal with it. There's pictures of it. That's depressing. But, there it is. As you can see, and that's when we had that Roham out there, and we're able to get, chip on some of it off, but then it's, it's just useless. Here, we have mapped actually where that rock is. And the highest point, I believe, is 1,011, and we need to get down to 1,001 finished floor elevation. So, as you can see, it's, it's just sporadic, but nevertheless, we're dealing with it. So, when we first came up with it, the first number that Turner gave us was a humongous number. We didn't think it was right, but that's what they gave us. So, in light of that, we looked at three options with Scott and Bruce. None of them were great operationally. It was impacting the Sheriff's Office, too, but they were willing to look at it potentially, not from a staff standpoint, number of staff, but just how they want it operated. And those costs were probably as much, if not more, and more time than just blasting the rock. The latest number that we've got is, you see it there, a little less than $665,000, and a five- to seven-week delay. We will have NOVA on-site. They are now. So, whatever, there's a process in place to deal with quantifying. We actually are quantifying the amount of rock before they actually blast it, so we're not going to count the trucks going out. So, it'll be very detailed on how we're accounting for every piece of rock that leaves that site. So, another thing we found out there is a burnt pit. As you can see where that is, it's, it's significant. And apparently, it was from the construction of these buildings. I don't know that for back, but apparently, that's what it is. And it is what it is. That's fine. What we're, how we're going to deal with it is, we're looking at moving the visitor's center. If you're looking at that red square, where you see the words right below it, right in the center of that red box, we're looking to put that visitor's center right there. And if we need the additional park, we're just, we're not going left or right. You know, I, I don't want to chase it all the way to the right or chase it all the way to the left. We think that's where it is. But, right now, if you vision out there where that big pile of topsoil is, that's kind of where we're going to put it, okay, if you, if you're out there. So, if additional park, it's where parking was going to go, and we can put parking over trash piles. We can't build buildings. So, that's kind of what we're, we're looking at doing that right now. We're looking at a couple of different scenarios, but I would tell you, we're 95% probably going to move in that direction. So, won't have any impact on the schedule. So, where are we today? Obviously, you can see the clearing and rubbing has been completed. Grading is underway. We're dealing with the rock issues. And I mentioned a little bit before, we're trying to reroute some of the utilities. Some of it is ripable, some of it is not, where it's not, we're blasting, talking about blasting, we haven't done any blasting yet. And when we do, we'll let everybody know. There's notifications to everybody. All, there's a lot of bush procedures that go along with that, too, that everybody will be made aware of. So, the precast panels are here to arrive on-site October 1st. Mentioned before, these are some of the same companies' approval letters that we've, that we have approved and under contract. I believe Turner is 97% under contract and bought out. That was as of the last OAC meeting, which was two weeks ago. There are just some small things, which leads me to the local participation. Right now, the reporting, we had slides, no sense on having the same slide. It's 20.26, but they are accumulating all the smaller contractors that have been hired within these larger contracts, and they're pulling that number together. They, I was hoping to have it before this meeting, but they don't have that yet, but they're pulling that together. So, the 20.26 is going to go up. I just don't know how much it's going to. Schedule. Blasting of the rock again, 9:20. The rig was supposed to be here today. It still may be. I don't know. But, hopefully, here soon. Be blasting and getting the rock out of here until middle of October. Infill, remove rock. What that means, basically, we're going to have to backfill it with, with more dirt. Foundations have already begun, and there's some, you know, we talk about some of the delays. The big delay is in getting the rock out of the way, where we can get all the underground footings poured, so the precast, which starts October 1st, continues to flow. And basically, the footings will not be, right now, we're Turner's reporting, we're still working with them on their schedule. Right now, they're saying that the footings can't keep up with the precast installation. So, I know it's a little bit in the weeds, but, but we are, we just got their schedule update last Friday, and we're reviewing it right now. Structure Steel starts coming in the middle of December. Bond completion update after rock removal. They gave us a date. I personally don't agree with it, so I didn't even put it up there. They said end of April. I think it's going to be sooner than that. But, anyway, again, we got that schedule last Friday, and we'll review it right now. There's the elevation. Same. Finished floor elevation's going to be, stay the same. PolkJail.com, and I'm available for questions. Is there any market for rock? You know, that's a great question. I, I re-landscape my house, and some of those boulders out there, I don't know if you guys have ever, or kind of tried to purchase one? Or that, you can't give them away, but when you want one, they are like $1,000 and up, plus delivery. It's crazy. So, if anybody out there uses any really good-sized landscape rocks, we've got some.
This is a tough report to deal with.
It is. You know, and you, I, I hope you guys, you all guys... You know, I hope you guys, you all guys apologize to commissioners. Y'all know me well enough, I'm a pretty straight spoken kind of person. All I can tell you is that we've run into it, just like we did the training center. It will be 100% transparent, everything that happens out there. I was really hoping that maybe we could put some of that rock in that big hole the sheriff says is my hole on the backside of his training center back there. But it is, but I'm not happy about it. I thought we had, I go back to my comment about the soul borings and the ground refraction that we did. I have some significant questions on that. I've had some questions. I don't have any answers yet, which I hope I would have, but we'll get to the bottom of it and I'll advise on October 9th.
Well, I know we've gotten through time in the last few weeks. Talked to Scott a good bit, Bruce Coyle, Frank, and they're keeping us updated also. Lot of work to do.
Yes, sir.
That's the job you got.
Yes, sir.
I want to start saying, are we on time and under budget? After that report, I'm a little concerned, but I'm not going to walk away from the meeting and have somebody say, well, why didn't you? The report seems a little tough. So we got a lot of work to do. Scott, I appreciate everything you've been doing very much. And Bruce, I do appreciate you saving the trees. And I think there's a, we just got a lot of work to do. We need to, we need to look at all aspects of it, where we're going to take the rock, where we're going to get some dirt.
Yes, sir.
Thanks so much, Eric.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyway, what is this trash pile, burn site, what does it consist of?
Everything and anything. It's not a lot of construction debris. I think it's trees, stumps, burn, trees and stumps, unsuitable soil. It was just basically waste that you did, somebody did not want to. Basically, when you build a home in your building, buries a lot of stuff, not so much sheet rock buckets, but it's, you see cement in a lot of people's jars. That's what it is. It's just organics, trees, just.
Okay, you're going to put a parking lot over this, right?
If we need parking, we, we will look at, we'll stabilize it enough to put parking on it if we need to, but we're not putting a building on it. We could, but the cost to do that would be significant. It's a lot less costly to deal with it for a parking lot.
And in the future, you're going to look for something?
We could. Yes, sir.
Can you go and stabilize it?
We'll probably come in there, we'll have to get Geotex in there, but you know, if we dig it all out, we'll have to backfill it with dirt. By that time, we do structural fill. Maybe that we dig a certain amount of it out and try to bridge it somehow or another with fabric and with stone. There's a number of different ways you can do it, which are less expensive than digging it all of it out, coming back in with a lot more structural fill to stabilize it.
Do you have a question or a call?
It would. And we have looked at that. We've looked at it, you know, we've got some, we are able to bury it in some places and put four feet of structural fill on top of it. And that may be an option too. So we're looking at all the options, honestly. And I can tell you, I'm 100% committed on it right now. So I'd be able to straighten the sky.
Thank you very much. And I did owe Commissioner Poundell's comments about Scott Green and Bruce Coyle's participation. And I think Talbot has been in there with them some too. So the staff's working closely with CPS.
Yes, sir.
And Turner and I think that's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. And we get Mr. Kelly Comstock with us two days in a row since he was at the Orisur Advisory Board yesterday and had a long meeting, but thanks for being here, Kelly, from Brown and Caldwell, to give us an update on the Richland Creek Reservoir Program.
Yes, thanks, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you today and give you an update on all the exciting construction that we've got going on at the Richland Creek Water Supply Program. First, we'll talk a little bit about the Eddo River intake. This is where the pump station will be located, pumps the water out of the Eddo River. You can see that there is a, right in this area, this is the large coffer cell that will house the pump station. So this has been the focus of the construction over the past several months. It has been very challenging times out there for several different reasons. One, we've had a lot of rainy fall that's occurred and as a result, the Corps of Engineers has been doing a lot of releases and their 80 megawatt power generation. And when that happens, that brings the water table up significantly and creates a water inflow situation into that. So that, that sort of played havoc with the pile installation that occurred. There are piles that are installed at the bottom of this excavation that go down over 140 feet and embed themselves in the bedrock. So this base slab itself, you can see here, the pile caps, they extend all the way down 140 feet plus and they embed into the bedrock below and they support that pump station slab. And that's important because the underlying geology here is very challenging. It's a karst type geology, which means it's basically caverns filled with a very silty soil that's almost like toothpaste. So you can imagine that that's very, very challenging. So we've, we've put in 60 hard cast piles. We've gotten to the point to where they now have poured this slab and so all of the risk of dealing with that underlying geology is now behind us. And it's been a lot of hard work by the contractor, but they've got to that point. One of the things they did during pile installation is they installed a working 12-inch concrete slab within the entire coffer cell. That allowed them to get down in there to do the work. What actually occurred is we had one of those karst caverns basically drain and create a sinkhole underneath that slab, that working slab. So it doesn't mean any impact to the long-term structure. What it created was a risk during construction. As they were pouring this slab, they'd have to get down in that excavation with now a thinner slab with a cavern up to 13 feet deep underneath. So that's another area that they had to remedy and work through over, over this past period. So believe me when I say everybody's excited to be where we are right now because we've got that base slab in place and now the walls can come up and we've got the most challenging times out there behind us. They have also been working on the electrical building. They placed the slab there, working with Georgia Power, running the power feed to the facility and beginning the construction of that, of that structure. The water treatment plant has made great progress over the past quarter. Roots are now on all of the different structures and they're working on finishes and installing a lot of the equipment that's going in. So a lot of the pumps and the blowers and the centrifuges, the process equipment is all going in, stairs and ladders and access areas are being put in. They're, they're also working on finish work within the various structures. So the windows are going in, painting's taking place, tile is going down, and they've done some final grading of the site and installing the curb and gutter in preparation of doing sort of final asphalt paving. So the water treatment plant itself is actually well ahead of schedule. The contractor's hoping to be done with most of the installation by the end of the year and then looking to really start the equipment up and get everything punched out and checked out in the first quarter of next year. So that's, that's very positive from a scheduled perspective. The reservoir intake tower is, is moving along as well. This is the, this is the intake that'll pull water out of the reservoir and pump it up to the water treatment plant. You can see they've installed the architectural precast panels on the exterior of the building. They've also done the framing of the roofing system, so they're being, getting ready to put the roof on it. And they've done installation of the pipeline that'll transfer flow to the water plant. It runs about a mile and it's a 24-inch pipeline, so that's quickly going in as we speak. At the dam, Brad Cole Construction's continuing to install the slurry wall that goes through the center core area of the dam. And once again, we are just about to meet a major milestone. That's anticipated to be done by the end of this month. And that will allow them to then go back and begin backfilling the embankment once again. They have to bring the embankment up to elevation 860, then install this interior slurry wall and then they can bring it all the way up to the final 60 feet. They've placed so far, one and a half million cubic yards of soil. They've got another million to go. So based on their schedule right now, they anticipate the end of this month really starting heavy backfill activity of the embankment and they hope to have the dam to the point to where we can do inspection with the, with the state in the April timeframe of next spring. So that allows to close the dam off, actually start the filling process. It'll take several months to fill before we're able to pump into the water treatment plant. So very positive with all of these components working together, we're still on track to being, having everything running by the end of next year. The Phase 1 finished water pipeline project along 61 is continuing to make great progress. There are 23 locations where there are road crossings and stream and river crossings where they had to do borings. They've completed 17 of those 23 and they've installed 30,000 of the total 56,000 linear feet of pipeline associated with the project. So that's, that's very positive. They're more than halfway done. And they've also started work on the Phase 2 pipeline that'll go from Wall Raven Place back here to the tie-in at 278. So that's another 13,000 feet of piping, so that's underway. Just wanted to once again remind everyone that there are continued lane closures that occur along 61 and there has been a shift in the timing based on school coming back in. G Doc has modified the timing to where they want the lane closures to not take place between 2:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon so that, so that school buses are not impacted. So contractor's working from 9:00 till 2:00, then he has to open all the lanes back up again and then does closures again from, from 3:00 until 6:30. Once again, they're minimizing wait times with a target of a maximum of three to four minutes. And for those of you that have traveled on that road, you know they're using a temporary stoplight system that works very well. So we don't have flaggers out there. We actually have true movable stoplights that make this timing work. This will continue throughout this fault. So please, recommendation to everyone to remember to drive safely and slowly around ongoing construction. And I'd like to announce that we're planning a field day. We know that there's a lot of people in the general public that haven't had an opportunity to come out and, and see the ongoing construction. This is the largest project that Pauling County has ever done and so it's really impressive from a construction perspective. So Friday, October 19th, we're going to be opening up the site to tours of the water plant intake and dam construction, open to anyone in the public. However, you do have to pre-register for a slot. We'll have 100 spots open. We're going to be doing tours at 12:00, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock. And so please visit the rcrwater.com website. We'll have a sign up starting next week where people can go in and sign up for slots within those various tours. We'll also do a feed out on Pauling social media, so you'll be able to get to that access at that point. But I think it's a great opportunity for people that are curious about the construction to actually come out and, and see what it, see what it looks like. And we'll provide all the, the safety gear that people will need for that. We just ask them to wear closed toe shoes if they do sign up. So that's an update of where we are. Be happy to answer any questions.
What they'll miss from your tour is Cory driving them out there, so.
We might, we might use Cory as one of the drivers. We have a lot of experienced drivers out there, for sure.
I just have one.
Yes, sir. We're on budget and on schedule. We've got some changes coming today, agenda items, but within the program contingency that fits my role. Yep.
Good report there.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for your time.
Great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Public participation on agenda items, we have no one who's signed up. Consent agenda item, we have two. Number one is appoint City of Dallas Chief of Police Joe DuVall to the Highland Rivers Health Governing Board as a new representative for the Pauling County with a term beginning September 26, 2018 and ending June 30, 2021. Consent agenda item number two is to reappoint Kevin New to the Northwest Georgia Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council with a term beginning January 1st, 2019 and ending January 1st, 2021. We need to, this is like to move one of these agenda items, consent agenda items to regular business. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, number one is discuss action to approve change order number four to the contract with PC Construction for surge system additions and subservice remediation at the Eddo Wall River intake and pump station in the amount of $986,129.20. This asks more to present.
Along with Kelly. Great. Thank you, commissioners. I had a couple of slides if I could get this screen back up. All right. Looks like it's warming up. This change order is for PC Construction, who's the contractor who's doing the water plant as well as the two different intake structures. And this change order four actually covers four different items that are all associated with the Eddo River Pump Station and Intake.
Kelly, while you're waiting for that, we do have it on our screen.
Oh, you do? Okay, great. Excellent. I'm sorry.
That doesn't help people in the first few rows. I think it's on the TVs in the back of the room.
It is. Okay, perfect, perfect.
We do have this on our screen.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So these are the four items and I'll go through each one. The first one is for a surge tank at the raw water pipe, pump station for the raw water pipeline. The second one is for additional grout at the micro pile installation. The third one is remediation of the sinkhole conditions. And the fourth one is additional depth associated with the micro piles. So the surge tank is associated with the raw water pipe station, or pump station, and it essentially acts like a expansion tank that you have in your home, that if there's a water surge that occurs, a water hammer that occurs, it protects your pipes from, from breaking. And the reason we're implementing this is, as you know, we've been finalizing the withdrawal permit with the State of Georgia. And we are basically permitted to withdraw up to 47 million gallons a day in a given day. Now, when the final language was written for that permit, they did not specify a maximum instantaneous flow rate. They basically say you have to average 47 million gallons over a given day. If you look at how a lot of the flows come down the Eddo River, when, when the Corps of Engineers doing power releases, they do large volumes of flow for, for shorter duration, so for maybe a 10 or 12 hour duration. So there's nothing in our permit that prevents us from pumping higher than 47 MGD as long as the minimum flows are available within the river. So it's in the county's best interest to be able to pump as much flow as possible during those high flow periods. Now, the pump station itself was designed with 47 MGD of capacity with one standby pump. So 47 MGD with one pump offline in case that pump was out for repair or, or it was down, you still had full capacity. The pipeline is designed for 65 MGD. It has a carrying capacity because 48 inch, you go in standard sizes, right? So you can pump 40, or 65 MGD through that, through that pump station or through that pipeline. So by making a provision to allow you to operate all of those pumps at one time via the permit, you're going to be able to do that. And with that, that final pump online, you would be able to pump up to 65 MGD. So that's definitely in your best interest to, to do that. The challenge is when, when you put the pipeline and the pump station full capacity, it increases the potential of a surge condition causing a failure of the pipeline. So a surge condition happens when you're pumping at the full rate, you get a power outage and it basically cuts the power to that pump. Then all of that water that's in movement then hammers back and creates a pressure surge within the pipeline. So we think that it's, it's in the county's best interest to add this surge tank. It gives you the ability to now operate at a higher level to, to be able to get water more often out of the river during those high flow conditions. And it also provides long-term protection of, of that pipeline. It was not included in the original design associated with the, the raw water pipeline and the pump station. So the total cost of that surge tank is just shy of $300,000. It's a large 5,000 gallon steel tank system with associated controls, air filling, et cetera that works with it. So that's the, that's the first item. The second item is, is associated with the, the micro piles that went in. Those are the 60 piles that were in the bottom. We saw the picture of that were in the bottom of the excavation. And then there's about another 80 piles that get installed above the upper level, upper level building. And as I mentioned, that karst geology beneath the, the structure, it also wrecked, it played havoc with the pile installations. Normally, when you install a pile, a micro pile like that, that you inject grout within that pile to create the, the concrete column of support. And what, what the pile installers do is they, they limit the amount of grout that's assumed to 200% of the casing volume. So if it's a 10... So if it's a 10, 10-inch diameter casing, they calculate that entire volume, and their bids are based on up to 200% of that drought. In our case, where we hit several karsh caverns, we used more than 200% because that drought sort of meandered off within, within those caverns. So the total quantity used was about 15,000 cubic feet beyond what was allocated within their bid. So they are do this per their bid because that was a limitation that they put, that 200% limitation as, as a max. So that, that total is $187,000. The third item is remediation of the sinkhole conditions that we talked about. I mentioned that this cavern opened up underneath, creating a 13-foot-deep cavern, and it had to be remediated before they could get in there and safely do work on this bottom slab. So I had a couple of pictures here to just sort of talk through. This was, you know, during some of the pile installation. I mentioned that the water infiltration that takes play, that took place during construction. And I think one of my previous reports, I mentioned how the pile installer switched from installing these piles in the dry to actually installing them under water so that they didn't have to constantly deal with this 30 feet of, of water that was coming in. So this was the pile installation that was, was ongoing. This was once, once they've actually sealed everything off, and you can see those piles then were, were capped down at that, that slab level. And basically, in order to remediate the sinkholes underneath, we had to drill a bunch of 10-inch holes through that existing slab and then fill with stone, and then come back in and use pumpable drought to sort of pressurize that up to fill that void that, that had taken place underneath. And that, that created the, the working platform and, and the assurance of safety to be able to get in there and put the weight of the slab until the concrete cured. And I'm happy to report that we've done the two lifts associated with that slab, so there could be a, another sinkhole that opens up underneath this, and we're not going to care because we're embedded 150 feet down, directly in the bedrock associated with it. So that was associated with item number three. And then the fourth item also deals with the piles. There's basically two different types of rigs that are necessary to, to do this work. One can reach up to 145 feet in terms of depth, and all the work that was done preliminarily to, to look at the, the depth that we would be going with these piles hinted that we were going to be at, at 130 to 140 feet. When they actually got out there, there was a part of the site that four of the piles exceeded this significantly. There were depths of up to 180 feet that they got to before they actually hit the, the bedrock that they had to embed into. We had to go all the way down because if not, you're just sitting there hanging, right? We had to, we had to get that support all the way down into the bedrock. So they had to deal with this on four of the existing piles that are down below. We've also projected that they're going to have excessive depth on about 10 more piles on the upper level. And so what this change assumes, both this one and that 200% drought, it takes into account those other piles that still have to be installed at the upper level. And so this cost covers worst-case assumption on all of those piles. And if it turns out to be better than anticipated, which hasn't happened on this site yet, but we're, we're holding out for, for luck at the end, then that money stays within the, the owner's contingency, and it doesn't, it doesn't get awarded to a contractor. So these are, these are sort of worst-case numbers. So that's the total of the makeup of this. It was all additional work or unforeseen conditions associated with that construction. And I, I'd just like to say, the contractor, both PC Construction and Advanced D Foundation who's doing the work, they have been very good working through all of this. You saw some of the innovation they used to continue placing the piles. They've been very proactive in helping, coming up with solutions, and they both have said this is the most challenging site that they've worked on in their entire career. So it, it's been really nice to have them as team members and, and coming to a solution on this, and very proud of the work that they've done in getting to where we are today. Any, any questions on this?
I do. Kelly, could you go back to the first slide, please?
Sure.
Yeah, right, nope, right there.
Now, surge tank, yes.
So what we're talking about, we have multiple pumps.
Yes.
And we are looking at averaging 47 million gallons of that.
Correct.
But because of extra flows, we can kick in the other pump and get up to 65.
That's correct.
Is there a concern, or do we need to take any steps? If we're running, so we have a, essentially a cold standby pump right now. Is there concerns with using that and having use on it? If, if one of those pumps were to fail while we were pumping 65, we would still, we would go back down to 47?
You'd go to 47. Yeah, correct. No, so, so...
Because I don't want to, I don't want to affect the redundancy that we are planning for because we don't, we can't afford to not have pumping.
Well, so if you think about, for this pump station, your whole idea is to transfer water into the reservoir. Now, this will not limit your ability to treat water, send water to the distribution. If, if this was a, the, the reservoir intake pump or a pump at the plant where that type of limitation could affect your, you know, your ability to get water to customers, you're absolutely correct. But in this case, we're just taking a volume of water from the Etowah and putting it into our reservoir. And if that happens more during one day or less during one day, it's made up the, the next. So by pumping 65 one day and then having to pump 47 or 35, it's still a net equal amount of volume. So the, the water level in the reservoir will, will fluctuate up and down. And in terms of life of the pump, et cetera, you basically want to cycle, you would never leave like one pump as just your standby or run all of them. You would be cycling through all of them together. So our recommendation is you want to regularly run through those things, and if you have the ability to pump and the flows allow that, you might as well pump as much as you can to the reservoir because you don't know when that next drought condition's going to occur. You could be in a situation where you can pump one day, the next day, the next, and then you have to go for a month without pumping. So as much as you can get in the reservoir during those periods, the better.
Okay. Thanks, good.
The reservoir's simply a holding tank.
Yes, sir. A very large one.
Other questions for Mr. Comstock?
And I know Lori already said it, but I, I see that our backup this went before the Water Sewer Advisory Board yesterday.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Thanks so much, Kelly.
Thank you.
We, let's see, we have number two on new business, discuss action to approve change order number three to the contract with Brad Cole Construction for rock anchors and structural modifications to the reservoir principal outlet structure in the amount of $1,420,156. We have a demo again.
Yep. And Jeff, I'm using it still, so hopefully, hopefully you can still see, Commissioner. Yep, okay, perfect. So this is a change order with the Brad Cole contract, which is the, the dam contractor. And as part of the dam, they are constructing the primary outlet structure. And this is a very tall concrete structure that's out in the center of the dam or center of the reservoir, and it allows flow into this structure to allow minimum flows to go downstream to Richland Creek. It also has an overflow spillway so that if, for some reason, you overpumped into the reservoir and you had a hurricane hit, 18 inches of rain, it would go through this structure and it would go out so that the, the dam itself would never, never get overtopped. If you recall, earlier on in this project, we had a structural issue associated with one of the reservoir towers. And it was a design issue that the engineer had identified and required a change. As part of the action that they took, they did an independent panel within their company to look at every single other structure out in the facility, to identify and make sure there were no other issues associated with anything that was done. And what they identified is with this primary outlet structure, they, they designed it per the code to be able to meet earthquake, earthquake requirements, that if an earthquake occurred, the tower would stand, no problem. But what they determined was that they did not take into account a scenario where the reservoir was full of water and an earthquake occurred. It's not the earthquake that would create a situation, but it would be the wave action associated with that earthquake would create a tremendous wave that could potentially put additional forces on the side of this structure. And there's a scenario that they identified where those forces could create a situation where this, the structure could tip over. So obviously, not a, a good thing to hear, and so this needs to be remediated to protect that from ever potentially happening in the, in the future. And so the resolution is to come in and still install a series of rock anchors, so that's at the, at the foundation of the structure. It will go down and they bore into the rock, and they, unlike a pile that supports, you know, from, from, from below, a rock anchor actually drills down into the rock and prevents lifting from occurring for, for that slab. They also would then create corbels along the side of the structure to provide the support necessary to where this type of action would not, would not occur. Now, the fact that this tower is partially in place, and this was a design issue, we had to work with the engineer Arcadis and basically talk to them about compensation because if, if the county had this design incorporated in the first place, there wouldn't be additional costs for remobilization, some delay work, as well as, you know, some of the extra costs now that this structure's up. There is some, what's called first cost value, which is stuff that wasn't included, that would have been there if they would have done the design properly. For example, the rock anchors going in, the, the concrete being used. It's just gotten a lot more expensive because they could have constructed it like they did so far in a much lower cost. So we've worked with them and identified a cost of $721,000 that they have agreed to compensate the county for this being a design issue. So that's more than half of the total cost associated with this. We do have to give a change order to Brad Cole for the full amount because there's no way to tell the engineer, hey, just cut a check to that contractor because there's no contractual agreement between the two. So basically, Arcadis has to provide money, credit back on, on, on what they're doing for the accounting and their services, and then Arcadis, or, and then Brad Cole has to get compensated via their contract mechanism. So we need to give a full, full cost of change order to the contractor and then get a reduction through Arcadis's so that it all balances out. So the total cost is $1.42 million associated with that. And once again, I mentioned we've got about a little over $4.25 million left within the program contingency, so that'll cover this as well as the previous change order. So this, this is, and we've known that this is, was, was out there, and we've been tracking this and the negotiations with, with Arcadis to come to, to come to finalization. So that is the recommendation there, and we did modify it to show. That was one of the statements that the Water and Sewer Advisory Board made, was that the, the final language did identify that there was Arcadis compensation offsetting part of that, part of that total cost.
Any questions? Mr. Comstock, we appreciate you.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you'll notice that all the new business today is the Water Department, so they had a very active department here recently. We're also very glad to recognize, since we're going to switch gears to Greystone, I recognize Mr. Tim Williams, who's out in the audience there. And he is the Marketing and External Affairs Director at Greystone, and is working very well with the Water Department to, to get this next new business item, which is number three, discuss action to approve the development agreement with Greystone Power for construction of the East Hiram Sewer improvements.
I'm pleased to bring this to you this morning. It's been, it's been months and, and longer in the making. When Greystone came to the county and, and announced that their plans to relocate their headquarters, they were asking, how do we get sewer to that facility? We were able to work with Greystone to come up with a development agreement that we could not only provide sewer to the Greystone facilities themselves, but also open up sewer service in that East Hiram area. The development agreement that you have in front of you this morning represents a project that we will, that, and it calls for Paulding County to construct East Hiram Sewer System Improvements to be complete by October of 2020. They, it entails a gravity sewer extending from Ridge Road and 92 north to Licklog Creek, and then down Licklog Creek to Bennett Road, about Bennett Road. A pump station that would then pump flow generally along Pine Valley Road down to the sewer line that has been put in place by Cobb County and the Cobb County line. The agreement with Cobb County has been in place for over 10 years now, and this will be our first connection to it. So we are, we are pleased to make that sewer available. We're already having interest from other, other properties in the area about development, and very excited to hear about this sewer possibility. Under our agreement, Greystone contributes $962,683 to the, to the, the project. It will be invoiced based on percent completion of the project on a quarterly basis over the, over the construction period. They will also pay tap, they will pay their sewer tap fees for the project. And we are looking forward to working with Greystone and, and their team on this. We've been talking about provisions in our, our RFP to make sure that, that neither Paulding County nor Greystone experience any damages from any delays on the, on the project, and look forward to their team's experience in our process. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
I appreciate the backup that you gave us on this and the updated backup that you sent us two nights ago. Thank you so much.
The only other thing to add is that we are going to have to have an easement acquisition period in this. We're going to need about 15 easements.
At least.
Yeah, so we'll be doing that as a family.
And we'll, we'll need to, we'll, we'll talk with county attorney about possibilities for expediting that, that easement acquisition.
There's a lot to be done, and you know you're on top of it. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Lori. I'm excited about this.
Yes, thank you. I recall that's right where the six lanes is going to come in, and Bill Caruth also is, is all coming together at a good time. Okay, that's the conclusion of our regular business. Looking down the agenda, no one has signed up to speak on non-agenda items, so we do have need to go into executive session for personnel and real estate, and we also have litigations, if you know. Okay. So, go ahead.
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session for personnel, real estate, potential impending litigation.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Davis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Chair, 5-0, and we are adjourned. We have completed executive session and will return to the work session part of our meeting, and I'll report that no action was taken in executive session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.